Let's call the meeting to order. As you may know, our first item of business this evening is a public hearing. This is to establish a CDBG funding for a couple hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate what was formerly the Russell Elementary School. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on that particular matter?
I need to call the roll first.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McCord? Mr. Maloney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Myers? Dr. Stevens? Mr. Stinnott?
Present.
Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Blues?
Miss Crosby?
Mr. DeCamp?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. With that matter out of the way now, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Mr. McCarthy, if you would step to the podium and give us your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Bernard McCarthy. My address is 515 Harry Street. And I just want to ask you to divulge more details of what exactly is being done in the way of rehabilitation of this building, what's currently wrong with it, and what are you going to use it for when you get done. I'd kind of like to know what the money is actually doing, and they never seem to present that information unless we get up here and ask for it.
I'm not sure who the best person is to address that situation, so I'll solicit volunteers, and here's an able one coming to the podium, it would appear, Mr. Peoples.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. We, one of the things we've done to answer some questions about what we plan to do with the building is even before we purchased it, we had us probably nine months of forums in the neighborhood getting input about, from people as to what they would like to see happen. And most recently, we had another public forum over there with the entire community to inform them about where we are in the planning process. It's going to be a multipurpose center. The urbanly, with housing being some of its signature activities, is proposing to build twenty-seven units of housing for elderly and special needs. That will be funded through tax credits.
You're going to put it on that side?
We're going to put it in the building. We're going to, we retrofit the building, to build.
So, you turn the inside of it?
A part of it, second floor. Okay? And on the first floor, Community Action will be there, and, you know, they have multiple social services, and one of their major projects in there is going to be Head Start. And then we're going to have space for other interested community organizations.
Thank you very much. Any further comment? Then that will conclude our public hearing on that particular matter. And having done so, we'll now call to the podium Pastor Reed Thomas from the Life Bridge Church. Pastor Thomas.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we acknowledge that you are our Creator, and that you know each one of us by name. You call us by name. You know us, Lord, our hopes and our dreams. And I thank you for each man and woman you have placed in leadership here in this great city. We pray for wisdom and for direction for each one, and protection and blessing on each family represented here tonight. And Lord God, we ask all of these things, by the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thomas. We have previously circulated the minutes from several meetings, the June 7, 21, 26, and 28 meetings in particular. Floor is open for motion to approve.
With approval.
I second.
Have a motion and second. If there's no discussion, we'll proceed to voice vote. Those in favor of approving the minutes, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. It takes us down to the ordinances, and Madam Clerk, if you will give second reading to the ordinances.
Number one, the ordinance pending surrender of the budgets of the Lexington State Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating reappropriing funds, Schedule Number 30.
The floor is open for a motion to approve the ordinance that received second reading. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Madam, if there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, we'll call the roll. Forgive me.
I still have to call the roll, though, you're correct.
Okay.
And, but you all also need to do your vote on your screens.
Let me say for those of you who are with us this evening, and those who may be watching on GTV3, we're still in the process of getting accustomed to utilizing the new voting technology that has recently been purchased, so we'll have a lot of fits and starts along the way, I'm sure, tonight, but if you'll bear with us, we'll try to move through it.
Me, too.
So, I think the, the process is, you're going to both call the roll, and we'll have an opportunity to cast our vote on the voting machines as well, so, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Ms. James?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stinnott?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues? Miss Crosby?
Aye.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
The roll call reveals that that ordinance is approved, and Madam Clerk, as you are ready to proceed with the first reading of the ordinances, we'd appreciate it.
Number two, an ordinance changing zone from light and dusk for I-1 zone to a mixed-use community MU3 zone for 0.10 net, 0.16 gross acres, and from a neighborhood business B-1 zone to a mixed-use community MU3 zone for 5.07 net, 5.44 gross acres of property located at 225 Walton Avenue. Sub- to certain use and buffering restrictions imposes conditions of granting the zone change to Ernie M. Hannah. Number three, an ordinance changing zone from a high-density apartment R-4 zone to downtown frame business B-2A zone for 0.2195 net, 0.3672 gross acre property located at 252 East High Street KL2 LLC. Number four, an ordinance changing zone from professional office P-1 zone to neighborhood business B-1 zone, 1.140 net, 1.476 gross acres of property located at 1388 Alexandria Drive, Anthony W. Justice. Number five, an ordinance demanding Article 1568, three of the zoning ordinance, to allow an existing accessory structure to remain at its current location when a principal residential structure is expanded to project past the front wall of that accessory structure in a residential zone, providing that the accessory structure is at least eighteen inches from any adjoining property lines. Number six, an ordinance demanding surrender of the budgets of the Lexington State Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriate and reappropriing funds, Schedule Number 31. Number seven, an ordinance demanding Section 215 Code of Ordinances changing the position title of customer service supervisor, Grade 115E, to customer service manager, Grade 115E, and changing the title of the incumbent, creating one position of customer service supervisor, Grade 113E, all within the Division of Government Communications. Number eight, an ordinance demanding Section 215 Code of Ordinances, reorganizing the Division of Risk Management as follows: abolishing one position of risk manager, Grade 119E; reallocating two positions of risk manager from Grade 119E to Grade 120E; abolishing one position of contract specialist, Grade 119E; and creating one position of attorney, senior, Grade 121E; abolishing one position of exposure analyst, Grade 114E; and creating one position of risk management analyst, Grade 115E; abolishing one position of accountant, Grade 113E; and creating one position of risk management accountant, Grade 114E; abolishing one position of administrative specialist, Grade 110N; and creating one position of administrative specialist, senior, Grade 112N; and reclassifying incumbents in the Division of Risk Management to become effective retroactive to March 5, 2007, and appropriate funds pursuant to Schedule Number 41. Number nine, an ordinance demanding Section 225 Code of Ordinances deleting one position of municipal engineer, Grade 117E, and one position of administrative officer, Grade 118E, both in the Department of General Services, creating two temporary positions of administrative officer, Grade 118E, with the term of service ending on December 31, 2010, both in the Department of General Services. Number ten, an ordinance demanding Section 225 Code of Ordinances, creating one position of family support worker, senior, Grade 112N in the Division of Family Services. Number eleven, an ordinance demanding ordinance number 132, 2007, to correct a typographical error in the line number of environmental inspector within the Department of Environmental Quality to become effective retroactive to July 1, 2007. Number twelve, an ordinance of the Lexington State Urban County Government authorizing issuance of up to $4,200,000 principal amount of Lexington State Urban County Government adjustable rate demand industrial building revenue bonds, Series 2007 Anchor Baptist Church Inc. project, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust indenture securing such bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement with respect to such bonds and other documents, and taking other related action. Number thirteen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute a claim request form for reimbursement in the amount of $4,106 from the Calhoun Kentucky Department for Environmental Protection for removal of underground storage tanks, and further authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute future such claim request forms during fiscal year 2008 not to exceed a total amount of $36,500, and appropriate funds pursuant to Schedule Number 39. Number fourteen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to accept a grant from Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in amount of $110,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the street sales drug enforcement project, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government for the expenditure of $36,670 as a local match. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 32, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number fifteen, an ordinance approving and adopting a program amendment for use of community developed block grant funds in the 2007 Consolidated Plan to establish a new project, the rehabilitation of the Russell Elementary School, 201 West Fifth Street, for the Russell School Community Service Center, $200,000. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 33, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number sixteen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to accept a grant from Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet, which grant funds are in amount of $35,000 Calhoun Kentucky Funds from the Law Enforcement Service Fee Program for police officer overtime hours for traffic alcohol patrol program, and the acceptance of which does not obligate Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 34, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number seventeen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant, the application is approved, which grant funds are in amount of $75,000 federal funds, are for continuation of the motor carrier safety assistance program, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government for the expenditure of $18,750 as a local match. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 35, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eighteen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the National Association of Police Athletic Activities League, Inc., to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant, the application is approved, which grant funds are in amount of $6,500 and offer expansion of the Lexington Police Activities League Football Program, the acceptance of which does not obligate Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 36, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nineteen, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant, the application is approved, which grant funds are in amount of $92,149 federal funds, are for continuation of the truancy assessment incentive project, the acceptance of which obligates Urban County Government for the expenditure of $46,464 as a local match. Preparing funds pursuant to Schedule Number 38, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. And number twenty, an ordinance authorizing Director Mayor on behalf of Urban County Government to execute agreements with the City of Richmond and the Madison County Fiscal Court for services under the 2006 Project Safe Neighborhood Program, and to constantly exceed $8,217 for the City of Richmond, and $8,216 for the Madison County Fiscal Court, and appropriate funds pursuant to Schedule Number 37.
Are there any motions with regard to the ordinances that have received first reading this evening? Councilmember DeCamp.
I'd like to suspend the rules and get a second reading on number 10 and 12.
Are there others besides 10 and 12? Councilmember Lane.
I wanted to walk on the item, Mayor.
An ordinance matter, or?
This is the ad lorm tax that was not put onto the docket tonight.
All right.
Maybe, I have 21 through 24.
We need to do the walk-ons before the suspensions, if we could, just to get that out of the way, and then they might want to suspend the rules, take that motion.
All right. So if you can withdraw your motion for the suspension of rules, we'll walk on these four items.
I will do so, glad.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, the council approved at our work session to put these items on the docket, and inadvertently they were left off, so we have provided you with a copy of the four resolutions, or motions, and I would like to place, make a motion to place on the docket under first reading ordinances relating to the ad lorm tax rates, General Services Districts, Health Department, Soil and Conservation, and Agricultural Extension Office. So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading to those walked-on items.
No.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We may have another walk-on here. Councilmember Stevens.
A walk-on motion, I move to schedule a public hearing on the ad lorm tax rates for Tuesday, August 28 at 3:00 PM. I further move to schedule a special meeting at the conclusion of the public hearing for a second reading of the four ordinances relating to the ad lorm tax rates, General Services Districts, Health Department, Soil and Conservation, and Agricultural Extension Office. I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Anything further in the way of walk-ons? And Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading, we'd appreciate it.
Number twenty-one, an ordinance levying ad lorm taxes for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office for the fiscal year July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government, all taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2007 assessment date as follows: .0031 on all taxable real property, including real property of public service companies; .0034 on taxable personal property, including personal property of public service companies and non-commercial aircraft, and excluding inventory and transit, insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage; and levying an ad lorm tax for purposes of support of the Agricultural Extension Office at the rate of .0032 on each $100 of assessed value, on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date. Number twenty-two, an ordinance pursuant to a request received from the Lexington County Health Department, levying an ad lorm tax for purposes of support of the Lexington County Health Department for the fiscal year July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable real and personal property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government, including real and personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft, and inventory and transit, and excluding insurance capital, tobacco and storage, and agricultural products and storage, at the rate of .028 on each $100 of assessed value as of the January 1, 2007 assessment date; and levying an ad lorm tax for purposes of support of the Lexington County Health Department at the rate of .028 on each $100 of assessed value, on all motor vehicles and watercraft in the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date. And number twenty-three, an ordinance levying ad lorm taxes for purposes of support of the Soil and Water Conservation District for the fiscal year July 1, 2007 through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable real property within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government, including real property of public service companies, at a rate of .0004 on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2007 assessment date. And number twenty-four, an ordinance levying ad lorm taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year July 1, 2007, through June 30, 2008, on the assessed value of all taxable property within the taxing jurisdictions of the Lexington Urban County Government, all taxes on each $100 of assessed valuation as of the January 1, 2006 assessment date as follows: General Services District .0800 on real property, including real property of public service companies; .0990 on personal property, including personal property of public service companies, non-commercial aircraft, and non-commercial watercraft; .1500 on insurance capital; .0150 on tobacco and storage, and .0450 on agricultural products and storage; full urban or partial urban services districts based on urban services available in real property, including real property of public service companies; .1590 for refuse collection; .0210 for streetlights; .0094 for street cleaning; .0920 on insurance capital; .0150 on tobacco and storage; .0450 on agricultural products and storage; and levying an ad lorm tax for municipal purposes at the rate of .0880 on each $100 of assessed value on all motor vehicles and watercraft within the taxing jurisdiction of the Lexington Urban County Government as of the January 1, 2008 assessment date.
Thank you very much. Councilmember DeCamp, I believe you had a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and ask for a second reading on number 10 and number 12.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Councilmember Beard.
I would like to suspend the rules and request a second reading on number nine, also.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and give second reading on number 18.
That has a budget schedule, so it can't be suspended.
I will pull that, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Blevins?
I've been asked by the administration, Mayor, to suspend the rules and ask for a second reading of numbers seven and number 11, please.
Any others? Then my understanding of, is we have a motion to suspend the rules, which has been subject to friendly amendments, to cover items number seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12, and to give all of those ordinances their second reading. Those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Number seven, an ordinance demanding Section 215 Code of Ordinances changing position title of customer service supervisor, Grade 115E, to customer service manager, Grade 115E, and changing the title of the incumbent, creating one position of customer service supervisor, Grade 113E, all within the Division of Government Communications. Number nine, an ordinance demanding Section 225 Code of Ordinances deleting one position of municipal engineer, Grade 117E, and one position of administrative officer, Grade 118E, both in the Department of General Services, creating two temporary positions of administrative officer, Grade 118E, with the term of service ending on December 31, 2010, both in the Department of General Services. Number 10, an ordinance demanding Section 225 Code of Ordinances, creating one position of family support worker, senior, Grade 112N in the Division of Family Services. Number 11, an ordinance demanding ordinance number 132, 2007, to correct a typographical error in the line number of environmental inspector within the Department of Environmental Quality to become effective retroactive to July 1, 2007. And number 12, an ordinance of the Lexington Urban County Government authorizing issuance of up to $4,200,000 principal amount of Lexington Urban County Government adjustable rate demand industrial building revenue bonds, Series 2007 Anchor Baptist Church Inc. project, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust indenture securing such bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement with respect to such bonds and other documents, and taking other related action.
I would call to the council's attention that we have representatives here from Anchor Baptist Church, to the extent anyone has questions, I just wanted to make you aware of that, and I appreciate your folks taking the time to be here this evening. Councilmember James.
Will we still have a presentation from them at some point, from Anchor Baptist?
I suppose we could, but there are no plans to do so, because if we vote yes on the pending ordinance, it would be completed at that point. There wouldn't, there really wouldn't be any need to have a presentation at that point. So I let everyone know they're here, in case you had any questions about the project, or wanted to hear from them about it, you could do so, I think, most appropriately at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, floor is open for a motion to approve the four items that received second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and second. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, we call the roll, and council members, will you start to vote?
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stinnott?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Miss Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
And Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Those ordinances are approved. Thank you. That brings us now to resolutions. Madam Clerk, if you'll give second reading to the resolutions.
So whether we should change that to AYE, that's what our rules say. The primary vote is aye.
Number one, a resolution ratifying the probation of civil service appointment of Jerry Hancock, Director of Parks and Recreation, Grade 122E, $3,000 bi-weekly in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective July 9, 2007; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Billy Van Pelt, PDR Program Manager, Grade 121E in the Division of Purchase and Development Rights, effective July 1, 2007; Cornell Burbidge Recreation Supervisor, Grade 110E in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective July 8, 2007; Penny McFadden, Administrative Officer Senior, Grade 120E in the Office of Compliance, effective May 27, 2007; Robert Tussi, Engineering Technician Senior, Grade 113E in the Division of Water and Air Quality, effective July 8, 2007; Kendra Carter, Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N in the Division of Human Resources, effective July 22, 2007; Therese Warwick, Paralegal, Grade 113N, the Department of Law, effective July 29, 2007; Kenneth Goble, Public Service Worker Senior, Grade 107N, the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry, effective July 7, 2007; Scott Vogt, Internal Auditor, Grade 118E in the Office of Internal Order, effective June 4, 2007; approving leave absent for Joe Kane, Safety Specialist, Grade 115E; and Division of Risk Management requesting 90-day council approval leave without pay from June 25, 2007 to September 22, 2007; Cindy Bartholomew, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade 109N, the Division of Solid Waste, requesting 78-day council approval leave without pay from June 15, 2007 to August 31, 2007; ratifying the Community Corrections Collective Bargaining Appointments of Stephen Puckett, Robert Howard, Jr., Lisa Farmer, Jamie Crawford, Sean Hubbard, Jennifer Taylor, Bambi Bailey, Community Corrections Sergeant, Grade 112N, 20.533 hourly in the Division of Community Corrections, effective June 11, 2007; approving the unclassified civil service appointments of Joan Dickey's, Family Support Worker Senior, Grade 112N, 15.654 hourly in the Division of Family Services, effective July 23, 2007; David Fedco, Aaron Greenleaf, Derek Karancheck, Jervis Middleton, Robert Narwold, Lauren Patton, Adam Ray, Justin Roland, Darren Sims, Patrick Tiernen, Jason Wallace, Police Trainee, Grade 311N, 16.052 hourly in the Division of Police, effective July 23, 2007; unclassified civil service appointments to the Office of Urban County Council, Rebecca Langston, Council Administrator, Grade 121E, $3,282.49 bi-weekly in the Office of Urban County Council, effective June 25, 2007; Ronald Scott Seymour, Aide to Council, Grade 000E, $1,700 bi-weekly in the Office of Urban County Council, effective July 2, 2007; unclassified civil service salary change in the Office of Urban County Council, Maureen Watson, Aide to Council, Grade 000E, from $1,800.48 bi-weekly to $2,022.40 bi-weekly in the Office of Urban County Council, effective May 25, 2007.
You've heard the second reading of the resolution. Floor is open for a motion to approve that resolution.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, then, if you would call the roll, and, members, if you would begin to vote on the tabulator.
Aye. Ms. Gordon? Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stinnott?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Miss Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. We're now down to the resolutions for a first reading, so Madam Clerk, take a deep breath and have at it here.
It's been worse. Number two. A resolution set the bid of R and L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the General Services Building. Number three. A resolution set the bid of R and L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Operation Adjustment Center. Number four. Resolution set the bid of R and L Cleaning Services establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Division of Streets, Roads and Forestry. Number five. Resolution set the bid of Education Remedies Inc., doing business as J D C Cleaning LLC, establishing a price contract for custodial services for police roll call training, gym and com tech. Number six. A resolution set the bid of Pipe Eyes LLC in the amount of four hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents for the annual preventive maintenance sewer cleaning program for Division of Water and Air Quality. Number seven. A resolution set the bid of Visual Image Systems Company LLC, establishing a price contract for reflective vehicle decals for Division of Police. Number eight. A resolution set the bid of Hall Contracting of Kentucky Inc., Paratell Electric Division in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for electrical switchgear equipment and installation for town branch and West Hickman treatment plans. Number nine. A resolution set the bid of CM Construction in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for parking lot construction at South Point Park. Number ten. A resolution set the bids of Shively Sporting Goods in the Trophy Center, establishing price contracts for trophies, plaques and silver. Number eleven. A resolution set the bid of Lagco Inc., in the amount of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars for parking lot construction at Wellington Park. Number twelve. A resolution set the bids of Cumulus Broadcasting, Insight Media, W T D K Y TV, W K Y T TV, W L X TV, and W T V Q TV establishing price contracts for L F U C G marketing programs. Number thirteen. A resolution set the bid of Allen and Commercial Cleaning, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Coroner's Office. Number fourteen. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Kevin Line, Engineering Technician, grade one eleven N, fifteen point four four two hourly in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August sixth, two thousand seven. Maria London, Laboratory Technician, grade one oh nine N, fourteen point eight six nine hourly in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Joel Ragland, Public Service Worker Senior, grade one oh seven N, fifteen point nine five one hourly in Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective August sixth, two thousand seven. David Billiter, Park Designer, grade one fifteen E, one thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents biweekly in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Denise Washington, Administration Specialist, grade one ten N, fourteen point six two eight hourly in Division of Police, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Frank Griffith, Plant Operations Supervisor Senior, grade one seventeen E, two thousand nine three dollars and twelve cents biweekly in Division of Community Corrections, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Christopher Taylor, Planner, grade one thirteen E, one thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents biweekly in Division of Planning, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Mark E. Stager, Plant Operations Supervisor, grade one seventeen E, two thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and four cents biweekly in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August sixth, two thousand seven. Diane Wills, Human Resources Generalist, grade one eighteen E, two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents biweekly in Division of Human Resource, effective July thirty, two thousand seven. Alita Rados, Administration Specialist Senior, grade one twelve N, twenty-two point five one four hourly in Division of Family Service, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Connie Michalski, Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, eleven point four five six hourly in Division of Police, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Wilma Williams, Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, fifteen point nine five six hourly in Division of Police, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Linda Phibbs, Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, seventeen point zero six four hourly in Division Revenue, effective August sixth, two thousand seven. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Tyrone Alexander, Public Service Worker, grade one oh six N, Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August eight, two thousand seven. Michael Cook, Public Service Worker Senior, grade one oh seven N, Division of Water and Air Quality, effective September five, two thousand seven. Reva Tanis, Staff Assistant, grade one oh seven N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July twenty-second, two thousand seven. Larry Price, Public Service Worker Senior, grade one oh seven N, Division of Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July twenty-three, two thousand seven. Leon Byram, Safety Coordinator, grade one eleven N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July eight, two thousand seven. John Saylor, Arborist Technician, grade one twelve N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July twenty-second, two thousand seven. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Paul Boils III, Trenton Bray, David Burks, Russell Bush, Jeremy Klipson, James Delacamera, Christopher Flannery, Michael Geis, Clifton Grimm, Jarvis Harris, David Hart, Matthew Jordan, Brandon Kennedy, Randall Claus, Ronald Cornrumpf, Thomasina Lilly, Samantha Lynn, Brett Marshall, Rebecca McGallister, Ron Moore, Patrick Murray, Timothy Richardson, James Smith, Benjamin Stratton, Dylan Taylor, Daniel Truex, John Tucker, Benjamin Walker, Justin Yeats, Anthony Young, Police Officer, grade three eleven N, Division of Police, effective August seven, two thousand seven. Ratifying the probationary community corrections appointments of William M. Marshall, Anthony W. Rogers, Rochelle Cotney, Luke Alvaldez, Rhonda R. Focal, Edgar O. Ferris III, Jeremy R. Warner, Kenwen L. Jones, Anita J. Aubrey, Avery M. Johnson, Libby B. Lloyd, Joseph A. Stang, Joseph D. Austin, Scott D. Basham, James J. Parker, Joseph W. Speaks, Emily K. Baum, Mark Swett, James M. Cosgrove, Charles J. Burton, Curtis A. Napier, Polly Ogeha, Philip Curtis Junior, Community Corrections Officer, grade one ten N, thirteen point three nine zero hourly in Division of Community Corrections, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Approving leave absence for Cassidy Burke, Staff Assistant Senior, grade one oh eight N, Division of Family Services, requesting eighty-five day council approved leave without pay from August fourteen, two thousand seven to November eleven, two thousand seven. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Anthony Wright, Director of Economic Development, grade one twenty-one E, two thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents biweekly in the Mayor's Office, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Approving the voluntary demotion of Jerry Southers from Council Administrator, grade one twenty-one E, three thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents biweekly to Budget Analyst Senior, grade one eighteen E, two thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents biweekly in the Office of Urban County Council, effective August twenty, two thousand seven. Number fifteen. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Ms. Priscilla Menard of a horse and sign the bill of donation for use of the mount of patrol unit at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number sixteen. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to provide any additional information requests in connection with this application for Wolfpack Remote Viewing System under the Commercial Equipment Direct Assistance Program. Number seventeen. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management and to provide any additional information requests in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of four thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars combined with Kentucky funds and are for the purchase of rescue equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number eighteen. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve payment to Zambelli Fireworks International for the Fourth of July, two thousand seven fireworks display at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Number nineteen. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve payment to the Lexington Philharmonic Society for the Patriotic Concert on July third, two thousand seven, at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number twenty. A resolution amending section one A of Resolution number six forty-nine, two thousand five, to change the references to Nichols Park to Nichols Park Drive. Number twenty-one. A resolution approving the report of the audit examination of the Lexington County Government Sheriff's Settlement in two thousand six taxes, where taxes collected as of April twenty-seven, two thousand seven, ingrained in the sheriff of Quietus. Number twenty-two. Resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of stipulation and recommendation and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission, case number two thousand seven dash zero 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 eight. Number twenty-three. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with J and F. Bragg, Ph.D., for the provision of mental health services to children and families served by the Division of U Services, at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars. Number twenty-four. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Twenty-eighth Judicial Circuit Commonwealth Attorney for Services under the Project Save Neighborhoods Grant Program, at a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars for the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office and ten thousand dollars for the Twenty-eighth Judicial Circuit Commonwealth Attorney. Number twenty-five. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Office of the Fayette County Sheriff for the provision of services under the grants to encourage arrest policies and enforcement of protection orders program, at a cost not to exceed seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Number twenty-six. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Roberts and Kay for facilitation of a community needs assessment for the Department of Social Services, at a cost not to exceed six thousand dollars. Number twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a group sales agreement with Hyatt Regency Lexington for the Bluegrass Invitational Wheelchair Basketball Tournament, at a cost not to exceed three thousand dollars. Number twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for control, sharing, and maintenance of camera systems for traffic management, homeland security, and Amber Alerts, and rescinding the previous such agreement approved by Resolution number three nineteen, two thousand five. Number twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Bluegrass Regional Mental Health Mental Redarization Board, Inc., doing business as Conference of Care Center for mental health services for inmates at detention center, at a cost not to exceed seven hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Number thirty. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a clinical service agreement with the University of Kentucky Chandler Medical Center for provision of dental health services to clients of the Family Care Center by the College of Dentistry, at a cost not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Number thirty-one. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a cost reimbursement agreement with the Federal Bureau of Investigations for reimbursement of overtime work by police officers at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-two. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an option and lease agreement with Sprint Comm, Inc., for a cell tower at Coldstream Park, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-three. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a clinical service agreement with the University of Kentucky Chandler Medical Center for College of Nursing for Nurse Practitioner Services at the Family Care Center, at a cost not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Number thirty-four. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Asbury College for additional funds for the creation of an anti-gang public service announcement, which is part of the two thousand three Project Save Neighborhoods project, at an additional cost not to exceed eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Number thirty-five. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts with the Lexington County Health Department for reimbursement to the Family Care Center for the provision of dental health services to students attending Harrison Johnson Tate's Creek and Arlington Elementary Schools, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number thirty-six. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change orders to the construction contract with past respects LLC for the renovation of the Cadent Town School provided. Budgeted funds are available for change order increases. No change order has the effect of materially changing the scope of the contract. No individual change order increase shall exceed twenty-six hundred dollars. Cumulative total increase for all change orders shall not exceed ten thousand dollars, and a summary of all change orders so executed shall be furnished to the Urban County Council monthly. And number thirty-seven. A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Jarboe Construction, Inc., for Gainesway Park Community Building, increasing the contract price by the sum of seventy-five hundred dollars, from twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any motions? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to place on the August sixteenth, two thousand seven docket a resolution authorizing the execution of a revocable license for use of church property with Southland Christian Church for the Flight Fifty-One Ninety-One Memorial Service scheduled for August twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Does she have to read it? Have a walk.
Those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam, Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to schedule a public hearing on the Lexington County Government, five-year area solid waste management plan on September eleventh, two thousand and seven, at three P. M. So moved.
Second.
Was, okay, all right. I'm sorry. I've heard the motion. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Any further motions? Madam Clerk, if you would give first reading to those two items.
I just have one to read at this time. Number thirty-eight. We don't have anything in writing yet for the solid ways as far as an ordinance or resolution.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing Director of Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revocable license for use of church property with Southland Christian Church for Flight Fifty-One Ninety-One Memorial Service at no cost to the government.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give number thirty-eight second reading.
Are there, is there a second? Thank you very much. Others? Councilmember Maloney?
I move to number eight for second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. I move number eighteen and number twenty-two for second reading, please.
Number eighteen and number twenty-two, correct. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ellinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give number fourteen second read.
Any further requests? Then my understanding is we're prepared to vote on a motion to suspend the rules to grant second readings to items eight, fourteen, eighteen, twenty-two, and thirty-eight. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
A resolution set the bid of Hall Contracting of Kentucky Inc., Paratell Electric Division in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for electrical switchgear equipment and installation for town branch and West Hickman treatment plans.
Second reading.
Number fourteen. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Kevin Line, Engineering Technician, grade one eleven N, fourteen point four four two hourly in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August sixth, two thousand and seven. Maria London, Laboratory Technician, grade one oh nine N, fourteen point eight six nine hourly in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective July twenty-three, two thousand and seven. Joel Ragland, Public Service Worker Senior, grade one oh seven N, fifteen point nine five one hourly in the Division of Streets, Roads and Forests, effective August sixth, two thousand and seven. David Billiter, Park Designer, grade one fifteen E, one thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents biweekly, in Division of Parks and Recreation, effective July twenty-three, two thousand and seven. Denise Washington, Administration Specialist, grade one ten N, fourteen point six two eight hourly, in Division of Police, effective July twenty-three, two thousand and seven. Frank Griffith, Plant Operations Supervisor Senior, grade one seventeen E, two thousand nine three dollars and twelve cents biweekly, in Division of Community Corrections, effective July twenty-three, two thousand and seven. Christopher Taylor, Planner, grade one thirteen E, one thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents biweekly, in Division of Planning, effective July twenty-three, two thousand and seven. Mark E. Stager, Plant Operations Supervisor, grade one seventeen E, two thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and four cents biweekly, in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August sixth, two thousand and seven. Diane Wills, Human Resources Generalist, grade one eighteen E, two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents biweekly, in Division of Human Resource, effective July thirty, two thousand and seven. Alita Rados, Administration Specialist Senior, grade one twelve N, twenty-two point[1670.02]
Alita Rados Administrator Specialist, Senior, Grade 112N, 22.514 hourly in Division of Family Services, effective August 20, 2007. Connie Michalski Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, 11.456 hourly in Division of Police, effective August 20, 2007. Wilma Williams Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, 15.956 hourly in Division of Police, effective August 20, 2007. Linda Fipps Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, 17.064 hourly in Division of Revenue, effective August 6, 2007. Ratifying the permanence of civil service appointments of Tyrone Alexander, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, in Division of Water and Air Quality, effective August 8, 2007. Michael Cook Public Service Worker, Senior, Grade 107N, Division of Water and Air Quality, effective September 5, 2007. Reva Tanis Staff Assistant, Grade 107N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July 22, 2007. Larry Price Public Service Worker, Senior, Grade 107N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July 23, 2007. Leon Byram Safety Coordinator, Grade 111N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July 8, 2007. John Saylor Arborist Technician, Grade 112N, Division Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective July 22, 2007. Ratifying the permanence of foreign appointments of Paul Boils III, Trenton Bray, David Burks, Russell Bush, Jeremy Klipson, James Dela Camara, Christopher Flannery, Michael Geiss, Clifton Grimm, Jarvis Harris, David Hart, Matthew Jordan, Brandon Kennedy, Randall Claus, Ronald Cornrumpf, Thomasina Lilly, Samantha Lynn, Brett Marshall, Rebecca McAllister, Ron Moore, Patrick Murray, Timothy Richardson, James Smith, Benjamin Stratton, Dylan Taylor, Daniel Truex, John Tucker, Benjamin Walker, Justin Yates, Anthony Young, Police Officer, Grade 311N, Division of Police, effective August 7, 2007. Ratifying the probationary community corrections appointments of William M. Marshall, Anthony W. Rogers, Rochelle Cotney, Luke Valdez, Rhonda R. Focal, Edgar O. Ferris III, Jeremy R. Warner, Kenwen L. Jones, Anita J. Aubrey, Avery M. Johnson, Libby B. Lloyd, Joseph A. Stang, Joseph D. Austin, Scott D. Basham, James J. Parker, Joseph W. Speaks, Emily K. Baum, Mark Swett, James M. Cosgrove, Charles J. Burton, Curtis A. Napier, Polly Ogia, Philip Curtis Jr., Community Corrections Officer, Grade 110N, 13.390 hourly in Division of Community Corrections, effective August 20, 2007. Approving leave of absence for Cassidy Burke Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, Division of Family Services, requesting 85-day council approved leave without pay from August 14, 2007 to November 11, 2007. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Anthony Wright, Director of Economic Development, Grade 121E, $2,865.39 biweekly in the Mayor's Office, effective August 20, 2007. Approving the voluntary demotion of Jerry Southers from Council Administrator, Grade 121E, $3,196.24 biweekly to Budget Analyst Senior, Grade 118E, $2,833.28 biweekly in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective August 20, 2007. Number eighteen. A resolution authorizing Director of the Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve payment to Zambelli Fireworks International for the Fourth of July 2007 fireworks display at a cost not to exceed $35,000. Number twenty-two. A resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of a stipulation, a recommendation and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2007-0008. And number thirty-eight. A resolution authorizing Director of the Mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revocable license for use of church property with Southland Christian Church for Flight 5191 memorial service at no cost to the government.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for a motion to approve the items that received their second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, and, members of the council, if you will cast
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Ah.
Mr. Stinnett?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCam?
Yes.
And Mr. Ellinger?
Thank you very much. The motion is approved, and those items have now been adopted. Unless there are other motions with regard to the resolutions, we'll proceed to communications from the mayor. The floor is open for a motion to approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There are a number of communications from the mayor there for information purposes only. You have, I think, received the report from the Division of Building Inspection. Are there any announcements?
Mayor, I'd just like to bring the attention of the council by reading through the communication. Mayor, there are nine resignations from Community Corrections, which is, of the 21, that's 43 percent of these resignations, which is a pretty high number. Just bring it to the attention of the council. Thank you.
Any announcements? Then that brings us down to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Mr. McCarthy?
Your Honor and members of the council, for the record, my name is Bernard McCarthy. My address is 515 Harry Street. I'm here on my own time. I don't claim to represent anybody, especially don't blame the branch of state government I work for for anything I'm about to say, because I'm about to criticize them almost as much as I'm going to be criticizing you. If you wish truly to make downtown streets or streets across the whole city friendlier to bicycles, instead of making them more hostile to the cars, what you really need to be doing is, first of all, have more frequent sweepings of the streets to get rid of broken glass fragments, which bike tires are a lot more vulnerable to relatively small slivers of glass than truck, car and bus tires are, but they're vulnerable too. Then also, you need to fix the gutters on all city-owned streets, and by that I'm referring to these holes left in the uppermost layer of pavement, right in front of various storm drainage inlets, that the worst example I can think of is on the eastbound lane of Fourth Street, about six feet west of Limestone. The grate of this storm drain is about four inches lower than the adjoining blacktop. Milling won't fix this unless you intend to mill out four inches more pavement than you put back, which I wouldn't recommend. That would greatly weaken the road. What needs to be done is to raise the lids and the grates of the storm drainage inlets the same way that you raise sewer manholes when the street is resurfaced. And, besides fixing the gutters of streets that you own, I need you to help me nag my bosses in state government to fix a few that they own. The most recent resurfacing of Newtown Pike, they milled out blacktop as much as they put back, at least, and then they excluded the gutters from the resurfacing? Well, this means that where gutters have sunk approximately two inches relative to the adjoining storm drainage inlet aprons, we're still stuck with this two-inch bump at each inlet. And that's why, when you initially designated this four-foot strip as a bike lane, you had to go back and undesign it about two or three weeks later. So this, of course, it's still, it is helpful that the white stripe remained about two feet left of where it was before the resurfacing, but I really desperately wish that those gutters would be fixed. They are hazardous. That whether-
Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you very much. I had one other individual who had indicated a desire to speak this evening, Mr. Sturdeman. He must have already left. There's no one else who wishes to speak? The floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.